Well, good morning, everybody. It's good to be back in Des Moines, I'll tell you. I spent a little bit of time in another nation, which I was very encouraged about, for those of you who think about the global issues around climate change and all those kinds of things. And we certainly, I appreciate your passion. I listened the last Monday when we had a, what, about 50 people stood up and made statements. I will tell you that it was interesting. The people that I work with at this global gathering are all local government people. And so it felt so good to be around 650 people that hadn't been able to get together because of a global pandemic, who are very passionate about the future of this planet and what we all can do together and how we work together. But we also realize that sometimes we at the local level don't have all the power, and we've got to figure out some way that we work with other levels of government. We've got to work in our country, everything from local government, county government, state government, and national government, to figure out what we do, how we do it, how we pay for it. But at least we're having a conversation. It's interesting, some of these countries in Global South don't have many options. And keep in mind, there's, you know, like, what'd they say, 7.3 or 5 billion people on this planet, all of whom have a future and thoughts. But it was good to see 650 people there. And I'll tell you, there was another 150 that were on every single day, virtually. So we had over 800 local government people that were putting their minds together, sharing ideas. We shared an awful lot of what's going on in Des Moines and what our staff is doing, and how we're working in our own, trying to lead by example with our buildings, looking at the future of our fleet, looking at everything that we do and how we do it, but also hearing what some of the people around the world are doing as well. So it's a great opportunity to share. So I thought before we would dive into everything that we're doing today, I'd give you a quick update on that and share. By the way, you know, one day we ought to do a workshop and have Jeremy sort of update on all the things that we're doing at our level and planning and trying to figure out what we're doing. So Jeremy and Jim Hoff and the others that are working on our own facilities, I think it'd be important that everybody kind of get sort of an updated understanding of what's going on, Scott. This morning, because we had hearings last time and we had a lot of people speak, I think we're going to open up, are we going to do the council meeting first? Right? So I will, let's call our meeting to order, and I'm going to ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will say that on the agenda this morning, there was added a council communication number 22-234 on five, and five A was at its crest to waive second and third readings on...
Sound ordinance.
The sound ordinance. With that, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, counsel? All right, we probably need a...
We'll vote for that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, let's move on. First item is item three, which ordinances, second consideration. The ordinance for extending and amending the franchise heretofore granted to Iowa Power and Light predecessor and interest to Mid-American Energy Company and granting into Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the rights, franchise, and privilege for a period of 13 years, from and after the effective date to acquire, construct, operate, and maintain in the city of Des Moines, Iowa, the necessary facilities for the production, distribution, transmission, and sale of electric energy for public and private use, and to use and occupy the public streets, highways, avenues, alleys, bridges, and public places for such purpose, providing for the imposition and collection of a franchise fee. Counsel, any comment?
Move approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comment? Hearing none, I'll ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's five yes, one no, one abstention. Motion carries.
Five, one, one. Item number four is an ordinance for the extending and amending the franchise heretofore granted to Midwest Gas Company predecessor and interest to Mid-American Energy Company and granting until Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right franchise and privilege for a period of 13 years, from and after the effective date here too, to acquire, construct, operate, and maintain in the city of Des Moines, Iowa, the necessary facilities for the production, distribution, transmission, and sale of gas for public and private use, and to use and occupy the public streets, highways, avenues, alleys, bridges, and public places for such purposes, providing for the imposition and collection of a franchise fee. Counsel, any comments?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other comment? Hearing none, ask everybody to vote.
Mayor, if I could.
Scott, you want to make a comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just for information for the public, the final reading will be scheduled for May 23rd at a regular council meeting. At that time, we'll also have the site agreement for approval and consideration.
Your Honor, the vote was five, one, one. Motion carries.
Our fifth item on the agenda is the first consideration, five, which is by amending section 42-246 and 42-258 relating to noise, sound equipment, sound amplifying equipment, and construction equipment. Council communication number 22-234. And A is the final consideration of the ordinance, the above, and the waiver is requested by Scott Sanders, our city manager, and requires six votes. On this ordinance, counsel, any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll start. So this is a continuation of our discussion that we had at a work session, I think, about a month ago now, maybe a little longer. Since then, I've heard from a number of the neighbors. I've been over to the site. You know, at the time, we knew this was about how we balance, and it's still about, I mean, with the sound issues, that's always going to be an ongoing thing. How do we get the right balance? And it's not easy. And on top of that, we have another balancing question that we're asking with this site. Because this site has been vacant, we have a question about what is the right reuse and how do we get a good use in this site for the long term? You know, I said at our work session that I think this site is appropriate for events, and so there's going to be some level of noise. This is proximate, you know, the Southwest 9th Viaduct actually, you know, has a decent amount of just ambient noise that's generated from that traffic, and that's right next to this site as well. So those factors go into this. We have a proposal in front of us that reduce the number of events requested for a noise permit by a third since what we saw a month ago. It also took out all the events at the 95 DBC level and only has six events at the 90 DBC level, with 18 events at the 85 DBC level. In addition, one of the things that I think we heard loud and clear is that neighbors did not want a concert venue next door. And that is one of the things that we specifically addressed in the ordinance. There is language that explicitly states that amplified sound will not be the primary purpose of an event. That is designed to send a clear signal. This is not a concert venue, and the type of events permitted shouldn't be concerts, and if they are, that's going to be a problem in the future. The other piece, and one of the things, even in the time that I've been doing this, we've been working on trying to understand and make our sound ordinance better. One of the ambiguities that exists in our ordinance is we have not specified how we take the readings and enforce on the readings, and that's led to issues in some places. What's in front of us specifically says that the readings are taken at LCF max for violation enforcement. So that provides some clarification, and that ambiguity has actually been an issue in terms of providing enforcement on some of our noise ordinance issues in the past. The final piece that we have in here is that it specifically says that essentially the permittee or the event coordinator in this area must have a sound meter and record the sound readings to be provided to city staff at request for up to 30 days after the event. That helps from an enforcement perspective as well, and tracking and monitoring. So it's one of those things that we can work with the neighbors after events to make sure that we're continuing to get the balance right, and if we're not, and if there's violations, it will allow us to go back and take action, because we're going to have data on each and every event that occurs. Something that I know, there was no data when this event, or this venue previously hosted music, and I know that was a concern and worry of the neighbors as well. So there are a number of different steps that we've taken. One thing that isn't in here, that I think we need to get in here, is some specification in terms of the number of events a month. And I think one of, we've had some conversation, and I think the idea is to narrow this down so that there are no more than, no more than six events in any one month. So that spreads it out some. And then with a sub-piece, I think the 90 DBC, no more than two of those in any given month.
You're talking about outdoor events, is that correct?
Permitted events.
Permitted outdoor events?
Correct. These are all permitted events.
I understand, but some of the events used to occur inside the secondary building, which I believe now the fire department wants to, or the union wants to...
Right.
...take back over, but...
I don't believe any of the indoor events require a permit under the...
I just wanted everybody to understand that.
Yeah.
So I know you've got a rather long presentation, but I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Yes, that is all I was saying. So with that, I think we need to add that piece, but with that, I'm comfortable moving this item. There was also one question, I think, in that first sentence, we talk about the 90 DBC up to six times, and then we do 18 permits on the 85 DBC. I think it's probably cleaner if we use the same terminology across both, so that there's not confusion that, I mean, I think it says permit before, but we either say six permits and 18 permits, or six times and 18 times, so that there is not confusion. So with those two things, I think we probably, I think we can do the first reading with that amendment, but we probably need to see the actual language on the number of events per month to do the second and third.
Scott?
Mayor, if I could ask staff real quick about the time constraints, are we okay to go with the second and third reading on the 23rd? As far as we know? Thank you.
So that's what I would move.
All right, that has been moved.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Sure, I've got a few questions, Mayor County. So just to clarify for all, if there was a event that was over two days, that would be two days, or two events, because there has to be a...
Correct.
...permit for each of those days, right?
Correct.
And so, refresh my memory, what the ambient noise on 9th Street is? Was that around 80 or 85, just the ambient noise?
Taken at Southwest 9th, at our last presentation, I think we had 84 DBC and 87 DBC over, and that's on the max scale.
Okay. And are there different qualities of sound meters that we're expecting that the, I'll say, the event manager would have? I know I've bought a sound meter that was, I don't know, 80 bucks. Are there different qualities of sound meters that were the expectation that the event manager would be using to monitor this sound? And I don't know if that's a little bit in the weeds, but Sue Ann, I don't know if that's...
I think I would add it. Go ahead, Sue.
Mayor and members of councils, to end on a, and the deputy director of the neighborhood services, actually, in the ordinance, it set out what the qualifications for a sound meter would have to be, and it's a national standard that they would have to follow.
Okay. And while you're at the microphone, so in reading the city code on this, it looks like overall, we should clean up this whole section of our code. What are we at item Q or something now?
Yeah, we are at item Q, and there are some inconsistencies in the ordinance that weren't correctly addressed when we went through the rezoning process for the entire city. We used to only have mixed-use districts downtown. Now we have mixed-use districts citywide, and the current ordinance, through a fault, would allow some of these louder noises, louder amplified sounds in residential districts, because we have RX districts, which are mixed, we have MX districts, which are mixed. So we need to clean that up also. So I've already started drafting the cleanup. I've already started doing some research on what other cities are doing. So I would like to bring that to a workshop and discuss sort of other ideas and the cleanup very shortly.
Oh, good. You've answered what would be my other question, is are there other cities you think that are...
Yeah, for instance, Minneapolis and some other cities don't use strict sound readings to decide when amplified music is too loud. They say, for instance, in a small venue, if you can hear the music 50 feet from the venue, it's a violation. Larger venues are maybe 1,000 feet from the venue, if you can hear it, it's a violation. So I'm trying to explore if that's an easier way to address sound rather than going up to Q for particular venues, that gets very confusing for pretty much everybody. I mean, it's cut and dried in the ordinance, it's just, everything's different. So if we could come up maybe with a standard that's more easily understood, you can take a tape measure, and if you can hear it, it's a violation. But it's something I want to explore with counsel at a work session and give you some other ideas.
Okay, and just one other question, and the hours that we're going to be permitting at this location, are those similar to the Breton Skating Plaza or the East Village elsewhere?
Yeah. East Village is a special, we've done a special overlay for that district, and everything has to close at, or shut down at 10:00 PM. This one does not have that restriction of 10:00. I think it goes to 11:00 and 11:30, depending on if it's a week or weeknight.
It's the same as Breton Skating Plaza, which...
Yep.
Which, Breton Skating Plaza is right next to that East Village special district, and we've allowed that at 112 DBC, right?
Right. That is not as close to residential as this...
But the hours?
The hours at Des Moines Social Club, at the old dome, 900 Mulberry, are the same as Breton. East Village, within East Village, is, shuts down sooner at night. There's a difference in hours between 900 Mulberry and East Village.
Yeah, so isn't it 10 o'clock for weekdays, 11 for...
East Village is 10 o'clock.
I mean, for this, proposed for Mulberry is...
10 and 11.
10 o'clock for weekdays, 11 for Friday and Saturday?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Can you review again, how many per month, what is up to the limit that you're proposing?
I said six per month.
Okay.
And a subset of that is, since there are, I don't want all six of the 90 DBC events to be in one month, so up to two of those per month.
And what was it before? What is it allowed now?
Right now, under the existing ordinance, you can have eight permits a month at 85 And under the existing ordinance, you can have those eight permits a month for all 12 months, recognizing you probably are not going to have events in all 12 months.
December.
But this is, the six a month, if they only did four months, they would be at that max six a month, but if they had events starting at, like a St. Patrick's Day event, for example, through Halloween, you're going to stretch that over, a little over half the year. So if you're doing events in all those months, they likely wouldn't hit that six max in every month. It's impossible to hit that six max in every month, because they only have 24, whereas under the existing ordinance, you could have up to 96 events.
All right, so the motion in clipnot version is what?
Move the item, clean up language on the times versus permits in that first sentence so that it's consistent and there's not confusion, and then add a limitation so that no more than six events a month, and within that, no more than two at the 90 DBC.
Permitted events.
Permitted events, yes, sorry.
And to hold off on the second.
Right, so we can see the language.
All right, so we have a motion. Any discussion?
There's a motion and a second.
I second it.
You seconded it?
I did.
Okie doke. Any discussion? Voting's in progress.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you all on that. Could we get a motion adjourned?
Move.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We sit adjourned. Scott, we've got a work session this morning. We're going to talk about police community. For those that are here, I would like to give you a quick update on something else before we get started in this. I know that those people under the Gold Dome apparently don't like home rule all that well, and so, especially as it relates to COVID, and so, we all, our authority is only around our own facilities. And when Scott proposed and we agreed, you know, towards the end of March, to take all, you know, requirements for masking and all that kind of stuff off, our Polk County numbers were at about 79. Well, over the period of time since then, those numbers as of last Wednesday have increased to 913. So they're over 10 times what they were. Not that we're going to change our requirements today, but I think that I've asked Scott to, you know, kind of monitor this and take a look at it. I will also tell you that the numbers statewide, you know, at that time, were about 633 new cases as of last week statewide. There were 4,056. There's numerous more hospitalizations, and all of a sudden, there's an uptick in deaths, although they're still low, they're at 21 statewide. But I think that for all of us, let's just keep our eye on it and just know that we may need to put some requirements on masking back, at least in our own facility.
What is the hospital rate, Your Honor?
Well, I can't tell you all of it. I will tell you, however, that the positive cases and those in is also ticking up. But let's hope the deaths stay down, and we can do it. But I do think that we ought to keep our eyes on, especially as we see new variants that are coming around, that some say are less lethal than some of the others, but I didn't want it to, you know, all of a sudden be sprung on anybody, that we're not looking at all the options and what we need to do to try to do our best to protect the health and well-being of our citizens. So thanks for listening on that. Scott, I'm going to turn it over to you for our work session meeting on the community engagement for police.
Mayor and council members, there was, there were two requests for workshop discussions dealing with police and the police department, so we have brought those together for you this morning. The first presentation, I'll have Captain Dave Ness come up, and the first discussion is engaging with a contractor for assistance in, I'm going to get this right, culture and climate, policies, procedures, and training. And so that will be the first topic, and then in the second topic, I will present... And then in the second topic, I will present on community review and advisory board options for the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good morning. Dave Nash with Police Department.
I'll start now.
Appreciate your time and attention. And the city manager just mentioned two presentations. And really mine kind of touches on three things that are happening almost simultaneously. And so we're trying to give you kind of the big picture. I think specific ask for today was tell us about the third-party review. And we'll certainly get into that, but we'll also provide a little information on CLEA, the accreditation process that has been discussed. And then the data information that we recently heard in this, in this chamber just a week or two ago. With that, I'll jump through a series of slides. There's about 15 of them. And entertain any questions if they come up or when we're done, whichever works. All right. Like I said, the primary focus, I believe, this morning was the third-party review by a qualified organization that can help with management services to the police department. This would be a city manager-led initiative, obviously with involvement from the police. So my slides on this are somewhat limited because ultimately it's going to be the city manager and his team that are having the more formal conversations about scope, et cetera. The second bullet there is the accreditation. This would be more police-centric because there is this body, that this CLEA that we'll talk about. And their interaction is directly with us and our policy manager and our leadership team. And then finally, the data management and transparency. And once again, you see that this is broader than police. So this will involve the city manager's office, the police department, and IT, possibly others. That's just kind of the big picture, and I will jump into these individual bullets. All right, the organizational review here is, recognize that the council had a recent resolution, I believe Councilmember Bozen submitted. But this is something that had been in the works prior to that. The things asked or included in that council resolution are very commonly performed by different entities that do this work. And so we had been working to identify some leading groups that could perform this. Again, culture, climate, policies, procedures, compliance with those policies and procedures, and training are among the common aspects of such a review. The city manager, I believe, has been in touch with one or more of these entities. And I won't speak to what, what his level of involvement or how far along they are. But I just know that he's reached out for information. And I believe those conversations are underway. Jumped ahead too far? No, we're jumping into the CLEA next. And I've been familiar with CLEA for a handful of years. We looked into it back at that point as a way to improve the policies and procedures throughout the organization. I can probably fairly describe it as fits and starts a little bit prior to that, which is very common in our, in our industry. And we looked at this possibility. Ultimately, it was determined that we needed a dedicated person focused on policies. And thank goodness, we made that commitment because things like use of force and pursuits and several high liability, high-risk areas were among the first things we tackled with this, this policy expert, Lieutenant Hartman. As we've made considerable progress, the CLEA basically would take it to the next level. And so I was interested to see, some of this is a portion of a candid report from them. But it was interesting to see that CLEA really grew out of the 60s and 70s, some of the early problems in our, in our country where there were, there was civil disobedience. There was a perception that law enforcement lacked sound policies and procedures that would contribute to accountability, integrity, et cetera. And so there was a federal report that came out, I believe, in 1971. had not anticipated this? They have some features in the slide that I hadn't seen before. basically after this report came out, there wasn't a lot of action on it. And so there were four leading groups that took that information and founded CLEA, this group that would allow agencies to pursue accreditation. The groups, if it's too small, are International Association of Chiefs of Police, Police Executive Research Forum, Noble, and the, I don't remember if it's international, but it's a Sheriff's Association. The CLEA program that they've created in its current form has a few different options. And we are looking at pursuing all three, meaning the law enforcement accreditation, which is a whole-scale evaluation at the department. But then there are also options for agencies such as ours that have an emergency communication center or dispatch, and then also a training academy. So the 180 standards that I've highlighted there in yellow is what all the experts, both those that are CLEA participants and the CLEA organization suggest as a starting point. Some entities start there and then go further to the 458. But they've described it as already very daunting to do that, to do the 180 in three years, especially if you're including the communications and the training. So that's what we're currently looking at. Standards of Development, Standards Review and Interpretation Committee. I won't read through all the slides here, but subject matter experts, this is what CLEA brings. It's across the country, these folks look at, you know, the industry leaders and help to identify the best practice. So not every agency has to do it on their own. Applies best practice and contemporary source for moving forward. Here's an example of what a standard would look like, requiring the, not only the reporting of a use of force, but the analysis therein. The process overview, this is a busy slide, but you can see there's several portions of this. The self-assessment would be one of our first tasks as an agency. Ultimately, three years down the road, we would invite people here for an assessment. There would, prior to that, be a web-based assessment. And there would be a determination whether or not we in fact met the requirements. And part of the reason that these three things are coming together, I guess, in my mind and in the presentation was, then CLEA offers this three-year or kind of a long-term. Oftentimes, agencies don't stop at three, but it's an ongoing commitment. And I think there had been a sense from the community and the council that there's a more urgent or pressing desire not to wait for three years. And so that's where these, the third-party review is kind of a short-term snapshot and gives us some things to work on, rolls into this, which is a more lasting, ongoing process. So we're not just receiving a report and then hoping to keep it top of mind. This would be more of an ongoing commitment from the organization. And like I mentioned before, it primarily starts with the high liability issues, several of which we've, or most of which we've already addressed to a large degree. Again, promotes accountability, not with the chief, not with a lieutenant that's in charge of policy, but throughout the organization. And one of the things that, I'm not sure which slide contained it, but CLEA, one of the benefits and also one of the challenges is it really requires not only having the policy and the procedure in place, but demonstrating that it's being followed. So the proofs, and that's a reason that there is a staff requirement to not only research, develop, train on the policies, but to demonstrate that compliance is occurring. So the, just, you know, some final details in their pitch here was, you know, it doesn't get done if it's not getting measured. And it helps to establish the priorities. So a couple of the things for us that it would be next up would be, you know, finalizing the agreement, the, identifying the staff to produce this important work. And then that staff would become expert through a training conference, a local network, and they'd get to work on the self-assessment. All right, we've been through two of the three pretty quickly. If you're comfortable, we'll, we'll keep rolling into the data management. And again, this is just a couple of slides, I believe, because this isn't necessarily a police-driven. Police are heavily involved, but ultimately, it's the manager's office. We've received invites, I think, the, at least that I'm aware of, the manager's office, IT, police have all been scouring the report and the recommendations. I believe we've got meetings scheduled as soon as next week where we'll start to work through those, prioritize, and move forward. And then just a summary slide and try to illustrate how these three things will work together to help our department best serve the community.
Scott, you need to make a point here?
Actually, I just, I appreciate the presentation, Captain. And this was meant to be a starting point for then council discussion on hiring a contractor.
Since I asked for this, I, my question was timeline. Because it seems by asking for this third-party review actually helps, helps your accreditation in the long run. So do we have a timeline? Or I know you had a list of companies as to when we think for the third-party review, which would be done sooner before. The accreditation seems like a very long process. So just wanted to get an idea of what it is, of what your idea of timeline is?
So council members, there are five companies, if you will, consulting groups that I see as leading industry consultants in this area. Asked for proposals from them. I've already reviewed one and spoken to a second about how they would approach it. So I would say within the matter of the next two weeks, I should be able to come down to the final and recommended consultant group to utilize. And then we can bring a contract in front of the council in June.
Okay, and within that, are they more police-driven as far as analysts? Or they do, when you talk about culture and climate, do they have the capabilities of doing those kind of things too?
Yes, absolutely.
Have we received the list of the five that you're looking at?
Actually, those were in part of our discussion a couple of weeks back, but I can, I can provide the more detail.
The smaller discussions that we had, it's the same list?
Uh huh. Did you end up adding OIR group to that list?
Which group, I'm sorry?
I think it, OIR, it was?
I think there was conversations, but had not been added.
Okay, because I think I'd specifically asked about them during the small group. So, I mean, I'd appreciate evaluating a proposal from them as well.
I know I wasn't super thrilled with the list that we got. And I was hoping that we would have a group that was different from those five that we had looked at. I wonder if there's more searching that we can do. I don't know if these, if these groups have done these kinds of reviews for other cities or if there are different groups that have done those kinds of reviews.
So again, these are the leading experts that have the most and the best experience that would be relevant to us. I'm always open for additional ideas.
I have, only because I saw them on 60 Minutes and I thought they made sense on how they, the Center for Policing Equity with, I think it's Dr. Philip Goth. And I know they have done other studies because I think they get at not only analyzing, but also the social impact and what can be done and what is, you know, what are the social issues that lead to needing more policing? And how do we handle some of the questions of why do we have to have as much policing? And what can we do to make our communities safer from the ground up? So that would be another one I would consider. Again, I don't know if they, how much they do in the overall. But I think the main thing too on review of the policies and procedures too is that it's not a review back, but it's really a review of how things have been done and have we followed the policy. So looking at, in that area too. It's not reviewing necessarily past activities. I think some people are questioning, but it's more reviewing, have we applied our policies and procedures quickly? So I assume these people do it.
Yes.
Right. And one of the things that I think this third-party review presents an opportunity, and I think there's interplay between, between all of these pieces, but particularly, you know, we're talking about climate and culture. One of the pieces that I liked about the data report is it should be a long-term goal of the city to create a data-informed culture within our police department. And I like, I like that piece. I think we're going to have discussions on some of the ways that we collect data, how maybe we collect more data in different areas. One of the areas where we currently collect data and I think is relevant to the policies and procedures and maybe where we have policy and procedure right now, and that was actually another recommendation that I liked, the training module for data collection. Well, the one place where we have a specific policy on data collection, at least I think, is the use of force reporting. And, and so my hope is, is that this third-party review can really dig into how we are complying from, and that, that goes everything from what, what do we do from a training? We've got this policy, so how does that connect to our training? And then how does that connect to our implementation? And really take a look at, you know, how are we following that policy? And how, how does that play out compared to the reports and the data collection we've done over the last couple of years? I know the last report that I've seen from a use of force perspective would be 2020. I think we should have the 2021 right now. But I think it would be great to specifically look at the 2020 and 2021 use of force reports in that context so that we have a, you know, I think a real opportunity as we do this third-party review to help us advance some of the work that we're hopefully going to be doing from a data management perspective as well. So really dig in on those particular issues and look at, look at compliance, look at how our policies and procedures are working, how our training is working, and how all of that can help lead to a data-informed culture going forward.
And within, within the information that we had gotten from Public Works on the, a lot of it was around the data. You know, it sounds like that one of the other concepts, I don't know whether it's tying with universities and how you work with them, and it all goes back to the data. I don't know if anything has been done on that area. But I think it's the, you know, the reality is too that more data analysts are going to be needed. And I would assume this review would help analyze truly how many, I think Public Works did already. But then what is, what is it that's going to take to make sure that we can implement some of these new, you know, things that come out of the reports?
So I really appreciate that you bring up the resources are going to be critical in this because there's, there's expertise that needs to be involved. And quite frankly, a lot of those resources are going to be civilians working within the police department as data analyst and potentially crime. data analyst and potentially crime analyst. So yes, that is fully expected to be part of the outcome of having this contract, is looking at what additional staffing makes the most sense to be data-informed. And it isn't just the police department, this was something that was pressed upon me and something I wanted to do myself with the entire city, being more data-informed with KPIs and whatnot, so.
And set up more monitoring reports and things based on the data that we received.
Exactly, to get to this question of compliance, are we actually following the policies? And so I just triple-checked, but yes, that's in the proposals, it's already been reviewed, and the conversations we've had with the others.
Okay.
Cross.
I've got another data question. As part of the Public Works LLC report, they mentioned our, the city's transition to the new Tyler product for...
Records management.
Records, there we go, records management. So could someone, Captain, could you give just an update where the department is in getting that transition smoothed out?
It is still being smoothed out.
Okay.
It's been quite a process, and it is a, we're real excited about what Tyler will provide, but I, if there was one regret I had from the, from the Public Works LLC report, it was when I read the report, it was phenomenal potential in that, in the new Tyler product, but you need the staff to do it and to use it right. You've got to, you know, you've got to be gathering the data in order to be able to act on it, and you've got to have the people that aren't, you know, a 30-year veteran police officer, but rather somebody that went to college to be analytics or some better use of maximizing the data that we have available to us. So it is moving forward, we've transitioned away from our prior to Tyler. There are still growing pains, just, I know a number of you, we've had conversations about our cooperation with Polk County and their agencies as it relates to, you know, communications and information sharing, et cetera. The first step, and we were real fortunate to keep them together with us on records management. The second step began this week with Polk County, and that's jail management system on their end. So we did this kind of Herculean task that we're still working through on the city side. They're doing theirs on the jail side now, and then we'll need help to maximize the capabilities of our Tyler product.
And so, Captain, then do eventually the existing records get flown into, flowed into the new Tyler products, so like if there's, whether it's on an individual or...
Yep, that portion has already happened.
Okay.
But some of the new recommendation from Public Works that haven't previously been done by the police department or the state of Iowa or others, that's going to require some additional resources.
Okay. And then, as it's currently set up, there are IT employees that are permanently assigned to the police department?
Correct.
I think in the Tyler recommendation, they suggested maybe those are better to be part of the police department payroll, not on the IT payroll. I think, did I, did I get that right, or?
There are different models that allow for that, yeah.
And so what path are you thinking that we're going to go down? Okay.
I think that is part of the next conversation, that's why we've asked Eric to come back to help us start down that path. Again, IT department's going to be pretty crucial, because you still want that data and IT expertise working with peers of the same vein.
Okay.
And so you don't want to separate that expertise too much, or you'll lose that connection and that opportunity to leverage that knowledge, frankly.
Well, and I know the focus of our discussion this morning is about the police department, but the other smaller report...
Code.
On building code and permitting, had some of the same recommendations, a value of data mining, and I hope we don't just put that report on the shelf and don't get a chance to address those changes also.
We will be pursuing those changes as well.
Okay.
So within the Tyler system, basically, the one recommendation is that you gather all information on all stops, Tyler system allows that.
Correct. And more information with each.
Okay, just wanted, I know that with the neighborhood reports, they haven't, that's probably tied up in the transition, because I was at...
Yes.
India?
That'll take some time.
I know we have kind of a broad discussion in front of us, three really big subjects in front of us right now, but I did want to kind of, we kind of went back to the data, and I wanted to go back to the third-party review. I just wanted to say, I think it's important that we have an element of community engagement in the same way that we did with the data report that we got from Public Works. I thought that they had a really good model for that, and so going in and making sure that we're getting feedback from the community, and specifically from communities that have differing perspectives of police and have differing experiences with police. We know that there's, you know, a history in this country of different treatment of different communities, and I think that that's going to be important to see how our policies, procedures, our culture of our police department is affecting different groups in the city. So I think that needs to be an important piece of that.
And that actually leads into the next presentation, so.
Fantastic. But I thought that the resolution that Connie proposed with all the pieces of that for requesting the review was pretty succinct, and I think that those, I think you had like three or four bullet points of like this, 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 and this. I think that we need to make sure that we're hitting all of those for this review.
And within a timeline, and I don't, you know, it sounds like a company is going to be hired, and also then I don't know how long it takes so that we can get some of this portion, then leads to, it can lead into the other items that we're talking about. But I think this is the first phase, and I just wanted to make sure it was front and center of the work we are doing.
And I'd also, both of the organizations that you two recommended, I'd like to see if we can reach out to them and explore that option as well.
But that would slow down, if you enlarge the pool, then that means we probably wouldn't have a recommendation before us in June.
I was looking at the second meeting in June, so I have every confidence I can still add those two, and absolutely have conversations and get the history of their work.
How many total do you have now?
Five would be, that would be seven.
So it'd be seven.
And some of these companies might not even have any interest at all. I mean, I think it's a matter of...
Right.
...in their background. It's my opinion what I saw, so I think if you could research or ask, because there are some companies that just...
Specialize.
Yeah, specialize, might not even have an interest, and they might be busy or have conflicts. But I think it was an interesting concept, because it was really getting at the core of, the concept for me was how do you solve the issues from the bottom up?
And one thing that was not brought up, Mayor and council members, is that we already have ethos working with this on culture, and so whatever contract we move forward with the police department, they are going to need to work with ethos and the information and the work that they've already done, so. And frankly, we're going to utilize Public Works LLC quite a bit in this area, too. So we've got a lot of eyes on this, a lot of attention being spent.
Yeah, actually, I had that on my notes, too, that, to review what we already have gained, so it could help move it along faster.
All right, we ready to move on to the next part? All right.
I'm actually doing this.
Wow.
Stand up. It's been lost since I've seen you on that side.
No, that was the one that was just up.
So I have only about seven or eight slides this morning. The second topic that was requested by council is an opportunity to speak about police review and advisory boards, and that topic, as you might imagine, or as you've read, is in the report that Public Works LLC has given us, and just for your reference in the public, that's about page 115, which is section 5-3-2, and there's quite a bit of research that was done on that topic. So we do have a good starting point for this conversation. All right, so where to begin in our discussion of making sure that we are receiving public input for our police department's use, as well as the city manager's office? And again, Public Works has provided us a great starting point. The differences that are out there for police review and advisory boards depend quite a bit on what the state laws allow for those communities, and then obviously the policy decisions that individual cities make as to whether pursue those authorities. We also have a great starting point, opportunity, in that there's work that has been initiated with our PPRC. That is a separate citizen group that has been appointed, and I've taken this language right out of the council ordinance that was passed, in that that group is to aid the city manager in reviewing the data and recommendations for policy and practice modifications to improve our law enforcement policies and practices. Also, to review existing and planned policies and practices and make recommendations to ensure elimination of any existing or potential disparities, this is crucial, that may occur within our law enforcement. At a minimum, the PPRC was to do four things. I've listed the three here, the first three, review the law enforcement data, again, we're underway with that, for existing and potential disparities in practices. Secondly, to review the law enforcement practices and policies. Again, that's been started with PPRC, related to the actual delivery of unbiased policing, which has been in place for quite a few years with the police department, even preceding the ordinance. Thirdly, to provide advice and recommendation on policy and practice matters. So I would recommend that any discussion about creation of a new police board strongly take into consideration that the PPRC responsibilities could be blended into the new board. In addition to that, there's been conversation about other communities that have had elements that would be attractive to add into a Des Moines board responsibility. So I've added a few that I believe would have consensus and the authority in Iowa law to do, first of which is to, and this is starting with the purpose statements within Cedar Rapids, and then you'll see elements that can be added. So starting with the purpose, I think these are strong statements that could be included within Des Moines, is to ensure fair and professional law enforcement that is constitutional, effective, and responsive to the standards, values, and needs of those to be served. Secondly, to ensure that the process of investigations into claims of inappropriate conduct by sworn officers are conducted in a manner that is fair, thorough, and accurate. Thirdly, to ensure that the public safety accountability bolsters confidence in our police, increases and improves public cooperation, and making our communities safer for everyone. Fourthly, to assist in identifying and analyzing trends in policing, again, back to the data discussion we've just had, whose origins may be rooted in a bias or systematic phenomena, and upon discovery of these trends, to assist the police department and the city manager's office in developing solutions to ensure the fair and equitable treatment of residents and visitors. I feel like those are pretty strong statements that we could include. Couple more, establishing the board would, could increase residents' understanding of law enforcement policies, procedures, operations through additional transparency. The transparency is crucial here. And sixth, to create an additional conduit for communications between the police and the community at large through outreach. And that will be another theme you'll hear throughout, that the outreach is important. The outreach is already there in a lot of ways, but this would help to formalize that. This would help in an advisory board to kind of funnel that activity. We have neighborhood-based policing that occurs, we have the ambassadors program, and we have thousands of hours of volunteer work by our police department in the community. This would give us an opportunity to funnel some of that, recognize that work that's being done, and raise it up. Additionally, Cedar Rapids, we were able to learn that training is crucial for these board members. There was over 30 hours of training suggested for their model. I very much like that approach as well, and should be something that the council should consider. And then also that this is centric to creating a better police department. So it obviously needs to be staffed by the police department and have city manager oversight as well, and involvement. Some of the other elements that we learned with the Cedar Rapids model, and others, frankly. Yes?
On the staffing and training?
Yes.
Do we know, does Cedar Rapids have their training? I mean, the way it's written in the ordinance, they had an amount, but have they determined what those specific training pieces are yet, and do we have that?
We can get the curriculum from them, because they've already gone through the training for their initial, for the initial group. And then obviously, we would want to specialize that for our needs.
Yes. And then the staffing perspective, is this recommendation the same way that Cedar Rapids staffs their?
I did like the way that they had different ranks and position involved, and so there'd be high likelihood that we would look at a similar model as well for what they had done. I was impressed with that piece as well. So some of the, this is where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. What authority does the board have, and some of the general powers that we found in Cedar Rapids that may be worthwhile considering? To add to the PPRC role is A, require and receive regular reports from the chief, including data on crime, traffic stops, and arrests with the demographic information that's being discussed with the other initiative through data management. B, review police data to identify areas for improvement and tracking progress, again, requiring data information. C, select a member from the board to assist the city manager in any hiring in the future of a police chief. I actually appreciate that type of input, because I will know that the selection of that, from that board, will have had this training, will have had the opportunity to participate in policy discussions, possibly for years at that point, and so I feel like that would be a great resource for myself as I make hiring decisions at the police chief level in the future. D, monitoring and tracking of complaints lodged against police officers as state law allows. This is one that's going to need some more work to understand how we can track and make public those types of documents as state law changes almost on an annual basis in that area.
So given that we have that issue, what does monitor, the tracking of complaints mean here?
Right, and so ideally, what we would be able to do is say that there was the number of complaints that have been lodged from residents, and what the outcomes of those investigations were, and then anything beyond that, we're going to need to carefully understand what we can legally provide.
How specific, when you're saying with the outcomes, how specific are we talking? We're just saying there was discipline or there wasn't?
No, actually, the investigations have outcomes, and there are categories of the outcomes that say the complaint was, and help me out here, either unfounded, confirmed, and there's like three or four categories that allow, and sustained, I believe is one of them, and so those, that reporting out would be something that I would hope we'd be able to put out into the public.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any information on what level of discipline, it would just be founded, unfounded, et cetera?
Correct. And if a complaint is founded, almost certainly, there was some type of a disciplinary or retraining.
We just won't know what?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, that's something that we will have to spend most of our time, because I understand the value... I understand the value in being as transparent as possible. But the officers themselves have rights, and so we have to be careful on that regard.
Can this group just simply monitor the tracking?
Correct.
The actual investigation is still done by?
Through OPS.
Right, yes, through OPS. And if somebody else, if there was another complaint, they can go to the human and civil rights?
Correct.
Correct.
And disciplinary actions have a route today through the Civil Service Commission.
Yeah.
Okay. And lastly, on this slide, to develop and implement, from time to time, and amend as necessary, a program of community outreach. Again, very crucial that we combine the efforts of community outreach, aimed at soliciting public input as necessary, and from the broadest segment of the community by all measurements. So council member Shoemaker, getting to your point earlier, input from the broadest segment of the community. You can hold us accountable for how we're getting input from the entire community as we move this forward with that outreach. So other elements, not to lose track, because this is not our starting point. Again, we have the PPRC. There's a reason we have the PPRC. It's because of public input we've had from years ago, many years ago. It's from the great work that Joshua Barr had set us down, a path with our civil and human rights. There was quite a bit of, you'll see on here, bridging the gap work, for which we got an incredible amount of public input from. One of the, I kind of skipped over here, but one of the things I heard from council is a desire to have every council member have an opportunity to appoint somebody on a new board. So I think a good starting point might be a seven-member board, that each council member has an appointment to, just as a starting point. I do not want to lose track that we've had years' worth of work on our equity efforts. There is a toolkit and a framework that's been established and approved by the council. It's being used by departments currently. Lot of great information for the public to go on. In fact, this is a live link to the equity toolkit, as people pull this up online. And again, our statement there, that social condition deliberately creates choices, access, and opportunities for all people to fulfill their basic needs, advance their well-being, and achieve their full potential. I want to keep that centric to the work that we do in all our departments. So I don't want to lose track of all those efforts as well, that make sure that we have the Des Moines flavor, if you will, of any board that gets created, because this work is important. There's no need to recreate it. There's an awful lot of guidance that we can get from the work there. And then we have, again, this report that helps us on the data-informed piece. At its highest level, and I'll sit down here and let the council speak more, at its highest level, we need to do better at data-informed decision-making. That's why we have Public Works LLC here, to help us quickly move on to the next steps in that arena. We need strong public input and advice. The chief and I have talked about how valuable having a community advisory board available for any actions with CLIA and the accreditation, any reporting that comes out through the data work that we're going to be doing. And frankly, as events occur across the country dealing with policing, a quick meeting of the advisory board with the chief would be helpful to say, that event and that other community had flaws in some fashion. Have we addressed the potential to avoid that in Des Moines? So having a quick response from this group, who's already knowledgeable on the department's policies, would be incredibly valuable as well. And so for a lot of reasons, I do hope that the council considers an advisory board for the police. You know, take additional questions.
I have a question for clarification. I'll let you sit down. But are you recommending we continue having the PPRC and create a CRB or a CAB? Or are you saying that we combine what we have already for the PPRC, and then turn that into an advisory board?
I would strongly consider absolving the PPRC and move those responsibilities into a new board that has broader responsibilities.
Okay.
And Scott, how do you see an advisory board working with the Civil Service Commission? Are there overlaps there, or?
Civil Service, now about the Civil and Human Rights Commission. How's your work with them?
Yeah.
Two different questions. The Civil Service, I would not envision very much overlap. What you'd be looking at is trends of concerns, and that's why having some type of annual report of the number and types of complaints, are we overloading the Civil Service with disciplinary actions? The work of this board, the new board, would be able to hopefully get in front of any of those concerns with policies and procedures, and even training that may be necessary to obviously avoid future needs for disciplinary action. So I see the advisory board as a proactive preventer that then the Civil Service doesn't have as many cases in front of them, frankly. Now, I do see quite a bit of overlap in the opportunity when it comes to outreach with the civil and human rights, because they have some similar goals in that respect. So there could be a fair amount of overlap with civil and human rights, especially with the bridging the gap work and some other areas as well. Then with the city manager's office, we have the equity effort that would overlap.
And so there could be something that comes before the advisory board, that's already been handled internally by the police department, or is on a path through the Civil and Human Rights Commission, or through the state commission?
Mm-hmm.
So just trying to sort out everyone's role, and if we're doubling up on things, I just want to.
Yeah. Again, the, what I would envision is an advisory board would not deal in the specifics of any discipline. That would be left to the OPS and the Civil Service responsibilities.
Well, and I guess there's where I have some questions, because, you know, if you look at the role of Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, both of those, I mean, state law limits what an advisory board can do, but there is a review function, and I think, I think there can be, at least based on what you described, I think there can be a significantly more robust review process that's still consistent with state law than what you described. And I think a more robust review process related to the complaints and overseeing that is a pretty important part of this process, and of building public trust and accountability. And so I think we need to maybe spend more time on that piece of this conversation going forward, because that's going to be something that I'm looking for in anything that is drafted.
I would agree with that. I think that there's a large hole in this recommendation specifically about what was asked for by the public, was for a review board, and I just think this doesn't meet that charge. At least for me, when I'm asking for this, I'm asking for a review board. I do think that there's a possibility for that within state law. I think that there is also, given that Cedar Rapids went to NACOL specifically, who goes around the country creating community review boards, and studying the state law in the area, and how it was created. I know there was a concern, because this was created before an update to ADF. I have every confidence that if we were to ask NACOL to come here, that they would be able to create a community review board that was in line with the current state law. And, you know, it might look slightly different from Cedar Rapids, but I have confidence that we would be able to create something where there was a review function. I believe that we have that authority.
Yeah.
Good.
I like the idea of engaging NACOL as well. I mean, I suggested that previously. I think they can help serve as a bit of a facilitator role, and they bring some expertise in this arena as well.
If we believe that Cedar Rapids isn't, you know, up to date with current state law, then it serves that we need to find a new version. And if we're looking at this and we're creating our own version, but it's not quite lining up with the current situation that we're under, it makes sense then to bring in an expert to be able to create something that does.
Or clarify that we can't get to where the public is asking. Understand, just from a high level, if there's a desire to review discipline, the only way you're going to be able to do that effectively and fairly is to have all the details. And what the states made clear in their revisions to state law is, a lot of those details are going to be held in confidence, and are not allowed to be shared. And so the crux of that is, you know, you don't want to create a review board that is only allowed to see some of the information, and not all of it. And so dipping your toes in this one is very concerning. And that is the state law that we have to deal with. So I hope I fairly explain that.
Isn't that the role of the Civil Service Commission, that's looking at, partial of looking at disciplinary and reviewing some of that? What I believe that some of our council members are asking, isn't that duplicating some of the process now, is what?
It would be.
I think the Civil Service Commission kind of does it in the opposite direction, just looking at 400 under the Iowa code. It seems like it's more in the opposite direction, whereas the employee who had discipline can go and ask for a review of that.
Up here.
Yes, versus like, the community asking for a review.
Are they, do they have all the facts, then? Are they given all the facts?
That is my understanding. They're allowed to, the Civil Services.
So they're allowed, under state law, to see all the facts, where, as we're looking at personnel issues, that's going to be difficult for a civilian board, is the way that I understand legal, saying that that is not, that's not legal to do.
Is the Civil Service Commission a state entity, or a city entity?
State statute.
Well, it's created by state statute.
It's created by state statute, but it's controlled by the city?
Well, it's controlled by the city, but the control extends to what's provided in state statute. Council can't, the city can't have the commission do something that isn't, that's inconsistent with the Civil Service statute.
But it is, it is a, it's one of our two quasi-judicial, right?
It's appointed, it's a group of citizens, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, that has statutory duties for, and the PD could explain this significantly better than I, but have statutory duties for hiring, and also disciplining of the employees who fall under Civil Service.
And they have access to those confidential records?
They would, yes.
Do they go into closed session to see them, since it's confidential?
They would also be able to go into closed session if requested by the particular employee involved.
Do we have any other city boards, commissions, or anything like that, that go into closed session, or have any kind of those powers?
I think the autonomous boards would, sure, the waterworks board, the library board, those do occasionally go into closed session.
Is the Civil Service Commission the only one under, like, under specifically the city that does?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, is the Civil Service Commission the only one under the city that's not like, kind of outside? Is that the only one under the city that goes into closed session and can review confidential information?
There conceptually could be reasons to go into closed session. It's extremely rare that they would go into closed session. The Board of Adjustment, for example, probably could, if there was litigation that was ongoing. That would be appropriate, to talk about that. That would be the most likely one.
P&amp;Z goes into closed session on occasion.
On pretty rare occasions.
Yeah.
What is that about? Is that litigation, or?
No, wouldn't be a litigation.
Do we know the requirements for what, when they go into?
What was the P&amp;Z example that you were talking about, Carol?
Oh, I don't know. Just reviewed their minutes, that on occasion, they go into closed session, and I think they discuss a project before them. I don't think it's.
I don't know what that would.
It'd be very rare.
I don't, yeah, Chris is indicating.
Chris is doing, but I have seen in their minutes that, well, anyway, so.
Yeah, but I can't tell you any time in the last 11-plus years where P&amp;Z has gone into closed session that I've been aware of. So if they go into closed session, it would be extremely rare, and I don't know what the citation would be.
My comment is, you know, I think that Scott and Captain have put a lot of time
and effort into this. Scott came to us with five different companies that he's gone out to, that are highly ranked, that he wants us to work with. We keep adding things to it, which is fine, but we've got five of the top. Let's focus on that. You know, I would be open to an advisory board, but I'm not open to a citizens' review board. There isn't any other profession, you know, as a realtor, we have professional standard boards, doctors have their own boards, lawyers have their own boards. We need to be judged by our peers, and somebody who has walked in those shoes before. I feel pretty strongly on that. An advisory board, if it's under the police department, I'm open to that, but it seems like we're trying to, we just keep trying to add things. We've already got our Human and Civil Rights Commission. It's worked well for years and years. If there's a complaint, if you've got a civil or human right, you can go to them and have them determine it. We've got our Civil Service Commission. I just don't know what a review board would do. So I'm open, I'm open to an advisory board, but I'm not sure that we even need that. But I would be open to an advisory board if each council member were to appoint one person. And don't forget our community ambassador program. It looks to me like there's a pretty good group of people right there that could serve on an advisory board. Those folks are engaged, they're out there in the community, they are us, they are out there, working at community events, they work alongside, you know, they're there just to be the eyes and ears of the public. But engage them more fully. You've got, I don't know how many CAP members we have, but a pretty good number. And that, you know, that started out of the, you know, small group of, I think pastors in the city that wanted to come together. I just bring that up, because they're already there, and they know what's going on.
I had a few more questions. The, so the process that we currently have for investigations, I learned about this through the Office of Professional Standards, and I learned that there was like that last kind of piece, where you, Scott, are on a committee with two others. Who else is on that committee?
Jeff is our city attorney and our Civil and Human Rights Director.
Okay. So it sounded to me like that spot was kind of where the community is asking to be involved in, like, reviewing the investigations after it's gone through the whole long process of police investigations. And so I guess my question is just like, where does the confidentiality end? Because I think that there was a thought that it ends at the department, like, at the bounds of the department, but then I know that it goes outside of that, because Civil and Human Rights Director, yourself, and the city attorney reviewed those documents. I was wondering, does, like, are police records confidential to council, as like the employing agency? employing agency?
We'll be happy to give you, do some research on that.
Okay.
The likelihood is no, because Chapter 372 vests the authority with the city manager to administer the police department. And so that's a question, but we'll certainly review that for you.
Okay. So then I guess, I'm thinking that like there has to be a spot in there where like as the employing agency and as the government entity and having the authority to create, you know, boards and commissions as subdivisions or government agencies, that then there is a possibility for the ability to see the confidential records, depending on where that confidentiality ends, just because it would be like a subsection of the city council. Or like, it would lay somewhere within that structure. And so I think that there is an opportunity for that. I think that obviously it wouldn't be able to go outside of those bounds and outside of, you know, closed session, a privacy sort of situation. But I don't think that we are meeting our charge if we don't explore this and if we don't create some version of this that includes review.
But isn't it our responsibility to hold Scott responsible for that? That is our responsibility. You know, we've entrusted Scott as our city manager and our city attorney, so we control both of their fates as far as job-wise. That's our role as a council, is the employment of our city attorney and our city manager. And so we have two out of the three that we employ on the board that overlooks all that. So I think that's where, that's where that, you know, that's where that draws the line, I believe. And I think that's more than fair, and I think when Jeff looks into it, I believe the state law is probably going to rest into that. I'm not an attorney, but I would say that that's, that's how we hold them responsible. Now, if we think that they're not doing the right job or we're seeing some inconsistencies, well, then we need to step up and make a change at that point.
I would say that we don't really have an ability to see if they're doing that job if we don't have, you know, unless we're reviewing every single thing as well. And because we have so much on our plates, the point of that is to create a board that would do that for us. And so I just think that there is an opportunity to continue exploring this.
If I can just add one thing, I mean, different cities have different forms of government. We have our city manager form of government. That's the form of government that we, as the city of Des Moines, had. We are not responsible what any other department in this city does. If we have an issue, we go to Scott, the legal, and the city clerk are the only three people that we are responsible to under this form of government.
But those are the only three people we hire and fire, but we are responsible for accountability and oversight of this entire city. And that is a policy matter, and it's not just, I mean, we set policy and parameters. We set other, I mean, we have other boards and commissions that we have created to provide that oversight and to fulfill those roles. So, I mean, I think this is a fundamental debate about policy direction and how we provide oversight and accountability as a council. And I recognize that there are a lot of tricky legal issues to navigate, but I think that that is something that we can do and still exercise our jurisdiction. But it is very much a policy choice to just say that we are going to completely defer everything to the city manager. We still have a role in providing accountability and oversight.
Policy and procedure.
And it is a choice, yes, policy and procedure, but it is a choice of how we provide that oversight and accountability. And there are other communities in this state subject to the same laws that we are that have looked at this and have, and have city manager systems like we do as well, that have figured out ways to provide oversight and accountability. It's a question of whether or not we want to do that and how we want to do that. And it merits time and attention and detail rather than just deference.
We've had a long discussion about this today. Scott, I think, is getting some marching orders. We're going to need some feedback, Scott, in the near future.
I don't think Connie got to speak yet on this topic.
I'm sorry?
I don't think Connie got to speak on this topic yet.
I just want to quit.
Well, Connie started the conversation.
It was a different topic.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work Scott's done to look at the comparison. I do believe we need a citizen review board to go along with what we can within the state. So I just want to comment on that. And we do have framework from other communities that we could get this done. So I would support that and phasing out the PPRC and going into a community review board. So I just wanted to be able to give that comment.
All right. With nominations and recommendations from each council member, right?
Yes.
Any last comment, Indira? All right. I want to thank everybody, and Scott, unless you have a final comment that you would like to make?
I feel inclined, I've got to say this. The amount of effort and discussion about looking backwards on how an event might have been handled by an officer and what discipline is, comes from that, I would strongly advise that we spend that kind of effort on looking at the policies and have public input on what it is we find acceptable in how policing works in Des Moines. If we stick to that effort of saying, you know, we need to change this element of policing, this element of resource allocation, that is going to be far more beneficial to our community than going backwards to say, that event two years ago, that just wasn't handled well and disciplined well. I would just leave you with that comment, because our efforts are going to be better focused on helping the police department understand where the community is saying, we want to police a little bit differently in this regard. And we need your input in that. So thank you.
This is a separate comment that wasn't really brought up before. I just would like to respond. I completely respect that opinion. I also think that there, when something hasn't been addressed to the point where the ones who were harmed feel like anything happened in regard to that sort of thing, like that, I think that when harm is done, there has to be accountability, and there has to be response, and there has to be change. And so I do think that there is value in looking back when a lot of what we're hearing is that nothing happened in regards to the things that happened. And so it feels a lot that we've just tried to push it under the rug and move on. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, focus on creating a better thing moving forward, but I do think that there is a value to looking backward accountability and reparation for harm done.
Well, I'm hoping that we're not shoving anything underneath the rug, first and foremost. And I hope that that's not happening, nor do I believe it's happening. But I also feel like it's like, everyone, a small fraction of our community is, look at, look at, you know, we got you, we got you this moment. And you know what? We need to move forward to say, okay, how did we react? And let's make sure that we have the proper policies set out so that doesn't happen anymore. And whatever happened in the past, it needs to be addressed in the way that we have it addressed now. Now, if we need to change that, then we can take a look at changing that. But I think we all need to focus on moving forward and not looking to the past and having "I got you" moment. Because the videos and the things that are, certain portions are put in there and certain things are said in the media have been blown out of proportion, and we, now that we're in litigation, we haven't been able to comment that on a positive way or give definition of how that happened. And so we need to move forward, and as soon as we can all move forward together, the better response we'll have and the better community we'll be, instead of keep dividing us.
All right. With that, I want to thank you all for attending this morning. Appreciate the workshop. Scott, we're going to be looking for updates on this progress and process as soon as is appropriate, but we're looking for sure at making a decision whether it's from amongst the five groups or seven groups by June. Is that correct? All right. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.